...within the classroom environment do exactly that. In terms of dealing with bullying, we felt that it was important to note that we have timely responses and we're committed to that. So, given a concern in an area, staff act to ensure that the concerns are addressed efficiently and in a timely manner. There's follow-up on any allegations, and this has to do with allegations of threat or aggression, something that may occur, or that there is a fear will occur. All right? So investigations are conducted swiftly by staff. Next, we wanted to identify who might be a person of support, and certainly all staff who deal with bullying. All staff in the buildings, from custodians to bus drivers to teachers and administrators. These are some of our administrators and counselors across the buildings within the district, those who have a good deal of expertise in identifying the needs of students, interface with students who might be most prone to being victimized, and of course are very familiar with the process. This would include guidance, school psych, classroom teachers, building administration, and any other staff person in the building. So the current tools that the district uses, we start with our district policy. May 10th, 2010, the school committee approved a new policy on bullying. And all staff and community, anyone in the community can have access to this on the website. It's clearly stated, and what will be done and how things will be addressed. So it's right up there, very, very easy to access. Our current tools, we use our student handbooks as our guide in terms of inappropriate behavior. We have regulations, new legislation as to the definition of bullying and what bullying is, so that we can identify that beyond an incident of aggression, peer-to-peer aggression, or a conflict of that kind. But we use our student handbook. We also address concerns through parent-student conferences, as well as peer mediation, peer buddies. We have programs such as our afternoon programs in the schools. Building-based teams are the teams that are put together to address sometimes educational needs, but also needs of intersocial concern or social skill concerns. And then, of course, our functional behavioral assessment, which comes into our state mandate to deal with behavioral concerns. So when we identify a need for an individual to get support, we work through mechanisms like our positive behavior intervention plans. We use the term P-BIPs in the building. We also have other support systems in place, like social skills groups. These come under the name of things like lunch bunch, pragmatics groups, friendship groups. We have anger management groups in some of our buildings to really address students who have anger management concerns. And then problem-solving groups for children who seem to really need some support in this area. We also have individually implemented curricula in the form of one-on-one counseling. This may be mandated by an IEP. This also may be provided without such a document if there is a need. Social personal awareness is also a curricula that's offered within our life skills classroom setting, very, very important, and supports students primarily with special needs to address concerns in the area of bullying and personal growth. We have referrals to community supports if the problems or the issues seem to be continuing and if ongoing supports are needed. So, for example, Mr. Wells brought into the high school the Community Health Link, an excellent program to provide services and support for students who might not be able to access the supports because of something like a distance problem between the clinician and the home, if a ride were a problem. Now we have the support service in the building. Students can access this community service right here, an excellent service. We have state-supported programs like our Army National Guard liaison, who comes in regularly to support and address. We also have other intermittent support programs in the form of interns that come in to work with students and things of that nature. With regard to students with special needs, our task force was primarily asked to do that as one of the components. The new regulations that were signed in April 2010 require all individualized educational program teams, IEP teams, to consider the special needs student status with regard to their social skills development. The research suggests that this is a group that would fall victim to bullying at a higher rate than their non-identified peers, that they might be primarily identified as victims, both within the school setting and as they move on as adults for reasons connected with their disability at times. So we need to look at each student at the IEP team meeting and craft a statement looking at their potential vulnerability. So the team is then required to include language in the IEP to help develop the student's ability to address concerns in this area, the ability to avoid and respond to potential bullying incidents, incidents of harassing and teasing. And this is, again, a state mandate, a regulatory mandate. Within the district, we are committed to having clear protocols. That would be the way in which we might implement a mandate, how we would adhere to the district's policy. And this was considered best practice in our recent training, our MARC training that many, about 10 staff went to, to become trainers of staff and folks that work in the district. So this how we are going to address bullying should become a standard operating procedure that anyone can reference. And this helps both potential bullies and victims understand, oh, there's something in place here. And parents can reference this, students can reference this, and feel confident that there are steps in place that people will be following, people in our schools. We need to follow the student handbooks. We need to meet the IEP team requirements. The language crafted in those documents is for the purpose of follow-through and support, not simply to be in a document. We need to provide review and reminders in terms of our practices, our policies and procedures for staff, and that is referencing staff training. Next, in terms of the referral sources and internal referrals and internal resources, we have, again, Community Health Link that's housed right here in the high school, area counseling facilities, the Wells Center. There are agencies in Auburn as well that we refer to. We have independent clinicians that have practices in and around our community, as well as hospital resources. Should a student be in crisis at a given day that we can't address within the building, we would then refer to a local hospital. We have law enforcement that services our community right next door here, which is just terrific for us for that. And then this thing that we refer to as inter-agency linkage. And this is, again, primarily for the disabled population. At about the age of 14, the state requires us to develop transition plans. And the transition plans are for the purpose of moving the student from the school district when they either meet graduation requirements or do what we call age out at the age of 22. And at that time, we need to make sure that the students are either supported by another agency or are capable of moving on independently to a training program, a college placement, whatever their personal abilities allow them to move on to. So our inter-agency linkage would be in the place to support our more significantly disabled students by accessing the Department of Developmental Disabilities, or Massachusetts Rehab Commission, or DMH, or the Department of Children and Families, depending on the individual needs of the student. And again, that's a requirement. We start that petitioning activity at about the age of 16, so as to ensure that if we have a student graduating at 17 on track, or 18 or 22 when they're aging out, that those services and supports are in place for them in the community. So we then, with our search, went into identifying areas of need for the district. We have identified staff training and support as a primary area of need. To help meet that need, we sent, as I said, about 10 staff to the MARC training. That's the Massachusetts Aggression and Reduction Center training for what was really a best-practice workshop on how to train staff to prevent and address bullying within the school itself. So we need to have communication regarding ongoing bullying concerns. If folks hear or have a sense that something is going on, this understanding of how we communicate and how we facilitate communication is really critical. We need to strengthen our community relationships with mental health supports, continue with our law enforcement facilities such as the National Guard, et cetera. We need to bring the community in and embrace these supports for our students. And we also need the financial supports to improve our staffing in this area in terms of providing training and having enough staff to meet the needs of the students. Continuing with the needs, of course, professional development, and that needs to be ongoing as our staff is constantly, you know, changing, we're bringing in new trained people. We have to continue to train them in this area. This will be the responsibility of the district, not so much a licensure program that they might be in. We need to have additional student support in terms of safety plans for students who are targeted. We need to educate our bystanders so that our students are stand-up students and are students who can say things like, "Not in my school," and this is what we do about it, so that they are educated and empowered as bystanders to help thwart bullying activity. We need building-based programs to prevent bullying on an ongoing basis, and those programs need to spiral into the next building as well. So from elementary up to middle, up to the high school. And then education and prevention programs for students and others that are exhibiting the bullying behavior. Oftentimes, we forget about the need to really embrace those children and say, "This is not the way. Let us show you a new way of interacting, a better way of getting your needs met." So we feel that early intervention is the key. Response time is critical, getting to the students with concerns in a timely manner, having staff investigate, having protocols in place for staff to petition our administrators or designate to address problems, parents as well, feel more comforted with that, to know that there is a process, a policy, a procedure in place. And then information indicating that bullying has occurred is immediately reported to the appropriate person and then dealt with. So three aspects of the process that we've identified are the reporting, the prevention, and the intervention to help deal with the concerns that our students have in this area. So I'd open it up for the group here who really helped put this together for questions on the part of anyone.
Any questions from the committee? You're being on, Mrs. Ennis, continue.
All right, I shall. Next, I'd like to have our parent representatives, Mrs. Rocheloe and Mrs. Perry, if they could maybe come forward and they could give their comments this evening, so the community can hear what they thought of this whole process. Thank you very much, Dr. Noon Yvonne and Mr. Ward.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rocheloe, why don't you start for us?
Good evening. My name is Angela Rocheloe, and I'm a parent. I have had two sons graduate from the school system and currently have a daughter at the middle school. I've been involved in many school activities, committees, and causes over the years. I have cut back a little bit due to professional and personal commitments. So when Mrs. Ennis, as usual, called me about the task force, I was a little hesitant. I didn't think I had the time. And then I thought about it. It was at the time when it was the height of all the tragedies and the news surrounding the teens and bullying and even the suicides. And I decided that it was a cause that I wanted to dedicate my time to before it hit my child, yours, or any child in the Oxford school system. I felt Mrs. Ennis and Mrs. Coonan led a great group of students, parents, teachers, faculty, administrators, and law enforcement representatives. It was especially helpful to hear about the bullying issue from each perspective. Sometimes you only feel it from the parent's perspective or the child's perspective, but I really gained a lot listening to the entire group. The work on the policy was very time-consuming and often meant discussion of each line, every word for word. I commend Mrs. Ennis for the hours of research she did on the topic and the whole group for their commitment and service to the task force, and always with the best interest of all the students in mind. And as Mrs. Ennis mentioned, you really could feel the heart, and people really just wanted to do a great job for the kids. It's been an educational, wonderful experience, and I hope to serve on the anti-bullying committee if this task force is expanded by the board. I'm excited about assisting to plan educational events, speakers, and fundraisers. Many parents that knew that I was on the task force reach out to me about stories that they've gone through. They had great suggestions and excellent ideas, and hopefully we'll be able to explore some of those ideas and bring some to fruition. This type of endeavor, however, needs parents' participation, not only to keep the dialogue open, but also to participate in making the anti-bullying effort a priority at home and in school. A mentor of mine once taught me words that I try to live my life by. If you're not part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. So I reach out to the parents out there to get involved as we develop the anti-bullying initiatives in the Oxford, excuse me, the Oxford Public Schools. And I think the slogan is really, a great slogan, because as a parent, you should take a stand and lend a hand. So I hope that everyone will do that out there. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. It's excellent.
All right. I'm Diane Perry, and I have 10 children. Two are out of school, two in college, two in the high school, two in Bay Pass, one in the middle school, and one at Clare Barton. And it seems like every day I apply everything that I learned in all the meetings, and I feel like I have learned an awful lot by everybody that I've met, especially the kids, actually. I want to thank them. Their input, I found, was really important in this whole process. It was a great idea to include them. I found that as a parent, just trying to get the kids on the bus and have a pencil and everything they need, I don't get a chance to see everything that everyone does to keep everything else going, and I really appreciate the opportunity to see that. And I was impressed by how everybody worked together from the town, in the school, on every level. It was impressive to see how well it all came together with the deadlines, excuse me. And that was just something to see as a parent, and to know that I don't have to worry that the people that we voted into the positions they're in have it all together and they're taking care of it. So thank you. I'm comfortable with the plan. I find that the aggressor, the bystander, and the victim, everything's covered. We'll see how it all works out. There's a lot of protocol and operating procedures to follow. I don't envy everybody that's going to have to keep track of that trail. It's going to be something, just trying to teach a class these days, I don't know how people are going to try to keep track of all this. So I guess we'll see how that goes, but thank you very much for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. As two of the parents, I have to say, and I'll speak for Mrs. Coonan on this one, we both know each one in a personal way. And we asked them, and then we kind of told them. But we are so happy that they, and like Angela said, you know, she did get contacted, so it means that the message is getting out there and that the opportunity for more parents to be invited in is absolutely there. So I think they did an awesome job. They were great.
Thank you.
They were. Thank you. And now if we could hear from one of our high school students, Zach Brogna. Zach also made a presentation to the committee that I think eventually will be part of an event that may happen within the schools, and I'm hoping that he has opportunity to do that. Zach shared a lot of personal experience, and he made a lot of effort and explained to us what happens and how it really hurts. So I think it's important for this young man to be heard this evening because he really is, from what I see from this young gentleman, and I think everyone else, if he could have bullying be ended, it would be cursed and ended and gone, and he would, I think, would be a key guiding force in that. So Zach, please, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I am a sophomore here at Oxford High School, and I was asked to put together a paragraph for, mine turned into a baby essay. But I was asked to do this, and I was very happy to. What does the anti-bullying task force mean to me? What this task force means to me is that it now shows individuals that feel it is acceptable to torment or harass their peers, that it is not acceptable and will no longer be tolerated. I feel with the implementation of this task force and its members, teachers, parents, students alike, we will be able to address this issue at all levels. I know for myself, being bullied at the age of 12 up until this past year, it made me feel inferior, almost like I didn't matter, which I now realize is not the case. I have come to realize that individuals that feel it is acceptable to torment others only lack respect for themselves, therefore attempt to make others feel the way they do. Once again, I would like to state, with the implementation of this task force, I feel we will be able to deal with and address the ongoing issues of bullying. This task force has meant a lot to me, and I am very excited to not only have been a part of this task force, but to know I have helped create a very important document.
Excellent.
That you have.
That's really nice.
Very good. Thanks, Zach. Now we have Ms. Kylie Brenneman, a 7th grader at the Oxford Middle School.
I really enjoyed being part of this committee. I thought it was a great experience for everyone that was a part of it. I found it enjoyable that teachers, administrators, parents, and students were all able to come together to help try to change lives of not only the victims of bullying, but also the bullies themselves, to help them work out better ways of dealing with their difficulties. And I think everyone learned a lot about teamwork and working together to try to help the students. And I would really like to thank Mrs. Ennis for giving everybody the opportunity to join the committee, because I think it really helped everybody.
Thank you, Kylie.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you. And now Ms. Molly Ennis. And Molly is also going to read the statement Sonny had sent over to our house, so she has two to read to us.
Hi. Hi, I'm Molly Ennis. I go to the Oxford Middle School, 1st grade, 7. This experience has been a wonderful one. I really feel that when someone had to say something, someone had something to say that they were heard loud and clear. I enjoyed working with the staff and students and the parents. I want to thank everyone who I have worked with to stop bullying. I have seen a great improvement in the middle school. This plan, I think, will be a great help to stop bullying in all Oxford schools. I am honored to be a part of something that can change so much for the better. Thank you. And now Sonny Bates, he's a 9th grader at OHS. He wrote, "When I first, when I was first asked to be on this task force, I knew that I would be a very important commitment, and that it would allow me to move and make a difference in the Oxford school system. I am especially glad to be involved with this group, because it may help prevent tragedies such as the recent suicide deaths that have made headlines throughout Massachusetts. Hopefully, the horrible result, hopefully, the horrible results of bullying will be a thing of the past. With this new plan, we can make, we can help to make sure that all children can go to school and not have the fear of being bullied by their peers in class, on the bus, in the halls, in all other school areas. With proper educations, education, students will receive that bullying has no place in school and that they can come to learn in a safe environment. I would like to thank Mrs. Ennis and the school committee for the opportunity they have given me. I would enjoy future consideration when a student input is needed. Thank you, Sonny Bates."
Good job.
That's great. Good job, Molly.
Thanks, Molly. Thank you. I don't know if any of the teachers or Sergeant Sad or any of the administrators would like to add anything. They certainly weren't shy when we had our meetings.
Now's your time.
Mr. Wells, maybe?
Mr. Wells always has something to say.
Sergeant Sad? Mr. Barone? Great, great.
I haven't prepared a statement, but I would just like to make a few comments. It was a great collaborative effort between all members of the committee, and the police department was glad to be a part of this process. We're glad we were invited to partake. I just want to assure the committee also and the people at home that Chief Hackett and myself have reviewed the plan that's put forth, the prevention intervention plan. We think it's a very good plan, and we're there to support it in any way that we can in the future. And for the people at home, I mean, the term bullying is thrown out there quite often, but as far as law enforcement is concerned, the buzzword for us is harassment. So should we get involved in any form or fashion, it's going to be criminal harassment, a harassment prevention order, which is similar to a restraining order issue, which I'm sure most people are familiar with, or of course, any other criminal complaints that should arise as a result of an investigation that the department heads conduct or any staff members get involved in. So I just want to reiterate again that should we be needed, we're there to help.
Thank you.
Thank you for your involvement. We appreciate it.
I don't know if there's anybody else.
Anyone else? We're good? All right.
Okay. And if I could just bring your attention to the cover of the plan here. We had, I had put out just something that was temporary for the draft, but this is actually one of our high school, I don't know what grade Brianna is.
Junior.
Junior? Junior at the Oxford High School, and it's Brianna Thompson. And she, this, I think, says it all right here. I mean, you have every type of student you can imagine in the circle here, so, and they're all holding hands and they're lending a hand, so I think it's a great, great cover that she did for us. And she was invited to the meeting, but I don't think she could make it this evening. But we commend everything that she did, and it was wonderful for her to help us out with that.
Okay.
And I think that's it.
I would like to open this up for public comment if I could at this point. We normally hold this to the end of the meeting, but being that this is such an important topic, if we do have any parents that are here that would like to voice their opinion on the bullying policy, please step forward, identify yourself, tell us where you live, and come right up. Yep, in the hot seat.
This is the most intimidating group I've ever had. As long as I've been around. My name's Greg LaPray. I am a parent of two boys in the school system. I'm here for a couple of different reasons. First, I got to say a compliment to everybody. The diversity, as I educated myself online and saw the list of people involved was fantastic, and I want to commend you on that. The second reason why I'm here is, I think you have to be on this topic, you know, it's as important as education is. And if you're not involved, you're going to be, you know, the tail end of either explaining to your kid what harassment is for one reason or the other, and neither one is good. So I believe you got to be involved. And I'll be blunt, I'm surprised more people aren't here, and I'll be sure to talk about this with my friends and neighbors. When I saw everybody there, we were talking, and this is a big turnout, and then everybody started getting up in the committee. And glancing at the policy online, I did have a couple of questions, and I'm glad I have a captured audience, so to speak, although- although I might be the one captured. Here's one question comes to mind. In the business world, as the officer mentioned, harassment's a big deal. If you work, you've gone to that class. And when I read the policy, and I haven't read the larger PDF file, I just read the two or three pages on that. When I read the policy, it seemed as if we're grouping the bullying with harassing. And then when I looked at educate myself on master general laws, it mentions repeated. And I didn't see that in the smaller pages. I don't know if it's in the bigger booklet.
It's in the PDF.
But in the larger PDF, which you could probably open up at home and take a look at too, they did a great job with definitions. It's on page 20 and it pretty much breaks it down as to what is classified as each level. And I think that does answer a lot of questions as well as cyberbullying as well. So, I think it is, some of it is there for you to look at the definitions on and how we classify it.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, we do have extra copies. We'd like to have, you know, give you one of the extra copies as a draft plan for you to take home and review.
Sure. And my kids will read it by 10.
And they'll be tested in the morning. Please let us know what buildings they're in.
And on a personal, no, I have to say this. One of the other, I said there was three reasons, I gave you two. I grew up in a city and growing up, it was a big deal for me. And I was, we had a very ethnic neighborhood, polarized by two particular ethnicities. I was neither. So, I learned a lot about bullying by having to manage through it. And to me, in my house, it's not going to happen. And that's another reason I'm here. I want to mention that. So, professionally speaking, I'm back to science criminal justice and so everything comes down to that. And Bill and I work together in the same organization. I'm a professional investigator. I have a team of investigators and I'm trained in the art of interview and behavioral sciences and all that kind of stuff. And when I see, you pick up things when you're kids. In my line of work, you probably pick them up sooner. One of the questions I have is based on experience here is, are we separating the investigation process, or should we, by age? I know with younger kids, self-esteem is being framed up up until, you know, primarily up until 9, 10, 11. I think when you get older, you guys know better than I would. And this, there's a little more defined line of right and wrong. Are we looking at, through the investigative process, how it could accidentally adversely affect the self-esteem of our younger child being investigated versus an older?
I think that's one of the reasons why it's great that I think that we have the people involved in this program that we do because they're the experts that can tell us at what age group we should kind of break them apart and so that we understand the difference in the definitions of bullying at each age group as well as the repercussions for bullying at each age group. So, I think that that, for us, that's a big deal that we have the professional opinions, you know, from a psychologist that can tell us that, you know, I think that we should focus our attention on, you know, grades 3 and 4 or 5 and 6 and what the repercussions for those children are going to be. And I think that, you know, we had to come up with a plan and a draft to address the state law immediately. And I think that what this group has done is given us even a step above what the state law has mandated that we were supposed to put in place. So, kudos to everybody involved there because this is, I mean, when I read this over the weekend, I was so impressed with the work and the, it's really so detailed that anyone could pick up this document and understand what the bullying policy in Oxford is. Will we be tweaking it? Absolutely. I think as we go through this process, you're going to see changes to the process, things that we try that may not work. Things that we want to improve upon as far as to even tweak further to make sure that, you know, when you get into the age breakdowns, that we are handling it correctly. So, I think that you're going to see coming down the road. Initially, what this was to do for Oxford was to put in place a very, very detailed program on how we feel of bullying in the Oxford School Department, as well as what we're going to do about it right now, today, tomorrow, after we approve this. This goes into law and it automatically will become policy in Oxford. And I think that's what we really needed to get out there first and to make sure that we were following, not because the state mandated, because it's our responsibility to our children. And I think that's what's even better, that they've made it a little better than the state requirements. So, to answer your question, you're going to be seeing changes. I mean, and they will be posted. And I'm sure anytime the policy committee has recommended changes to the school committee to this, it will be posted for everyone to see so that everyone understands. It will be included in next year's handbooks. Handbooks are really what the principals and the administrators live by. We're the ones that set that through them. They present to us what the handbooks are. We make recommendations, suggestions. And it's all based on policies that we've already established. So, yeah, you're going to see some tweaking. You're going to see some things that need to be addressed as we go through the process. But I think overall, we've put together a very, very solid policy for us to start this whole plan with.
Yeah, it seems that way. And I want to come across as critical. I was just knowing that my 11-year-old has a much stronger handle on right and wrong than my 8-year-old. And what I've seen with an 8-year-old is if members of the opposite sex, if you tease somebody because they have cooties, because you don't know how to share your emotions yet, versus an 11-year-old doing something out of line with the opposite sex, I was wondering if that is going to be approached the same way because, you know, the 8-year-old would clearly be more affected through that process than an 11-year-old.
Mrs. Gadowski, you had a point you wanted to make?
Great. Well, thank you. The last thing I'll say, there is great awareness created, I mean, beyond the media awareness, but from the attention given to the, from all of you. So, people are talking about it and I know they're talking about it with their kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Any other comments? We have another. Come right up. Just please identify yourself.
Sure. My name is Helen Howard. I have two students currently at the high school. I too was on the anti-task force. I just, I just want to say thank you to Mrs. Ennis, Mr. Wells, Mrs. Hackett, Mr. Milner. As Mrs. Ennis had stated earlier, my son had some pretty serious issues. I've got to say, even prior to the task force, things were handled with the police as well. Things were handled through the high school, through the middle school, pretty well. So, I was excited to be asked to be on the committee and just to see it kind of in writing. But I just, like I said, I just wanted to thank those, you people personally. You know, things are going great. You had, you know, mentioned it yourself, Mrs. Ennis, that, you know, things are going well now. And I'm excited to see, you know, we come into law and have everybody follow it. But that's, you know, that's all I wanted to say is just, I'm just grateful to have been part of it.
Thank you.
What grateful you were too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? All right, I'd like to close the floor on this portion of it. We do have to put this into effect, so I would ask that, yes, Mrs. Ennis?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the draft plan and that our superintendent forward this plan, take it out of its draft into its actual plan and send it to the DESE.
Very good. Do I have a second on that motion?
A second for further, just one question.
Sure.
I believe you said, Mr. Himmelberger, that this is already incorporated into the master plan or not?
The changes that were, Friday's changes.
Are in here.
Yes. And the new one you just got tonight.
We just received this tonight and it was not in the old one. So, according to what you said, it's included in here now in print.
In online. Yes, sir.
Okay. You good with that? So, we do have a motion in a second. Could we put that to vote, please? Mrs. DeWitzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. This is now policy.
Right.
Thank you very much. And I do want to make mention again, I can't even tell you how much we appreciate the work that you've all done in this process. The two of you, thank you so much for taking that off the committee's shoulders and really tackling it with the group. We really do appreciate your efforts. And again, for parents and teachers to take the time to do this, this was probably one of the most important things we could do this year. I really, really thank you from the committee for your time and your efforts. So, thank you. Mrs. Ennis?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to now make a motion that we dissolve the anti-bullying task force as we have completed our task. And we now move in to become the anti-bullying subcommittee to the school committee. We feel that we have more work to do as a subcommittee. We have obviously completed the task before us, like Mrs. Rochelwood said. We do have other parents, I think, that are willing to come in. I hope the gentleman that spoke this evening may be willing to join the subcommittee if the committee approves it. And I think that we also, from some of the things I've heard, a few more students would like to participate. And they are, I have to say, in my opinion, key to a lot of this process. That is my motion, sir.
Okay. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second again for clarification.
Go right ahead.
You're now advocating to dissolve the study committee?
Yes.
And move to a
Subcommittee.
Permanent, well, not permanent, a subcommittee as long as needed. Yes.
Second.
Okay.
With that clarification, that you understand that it's now moved from a study committee to a committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Subcommittee.
Very good. We'd like to put that to vote if we could?
Yes.
Mrs. DeWitzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson, I also vote yes. So, it is now a subcommittee of the school committee. Very good.
You'll hear from me after the holidays.
And you will.
Little time off.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have the procedural vote for collaborative bylaw change. In your packet you were given, pretty much what we're doing right now, that we need change for the collaborative. There's a change in the bylaw that we need to include, which, if I can find it. Oh, we got it right here. Basically, what they are proposing, we'd like you to go through that for the committee if you could, Mr. Himmelberger?
Certainly, Mr. Spitz. Quite simply, in its amendment proposed to the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative Agreement, we are, Oxford is a member town of the collaborative, pursuant to the provisions of Section 11 of the SWCC agreement and pursuant to a vote in favor of this amendment by member towns and districts, the agreement is amended as follows. Number 1, Paragraph 1 of Section 3 shall be amended by omitting the word annually in the first sentence. The first sentence of Paragraph 1, Section 3 shall henceforth read, "The school committee of each member town shall appoint one person from its membership to formal board to be known as the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative Board, hereinafter referred to as the Board." And Paragraph 6 shall be amended by omitting 4 in the second sentence and replacing it with 8, therefore making the quorum consisting of 8 voting members now that the number has increased. A quorum shall consist of 8 and the Board may act by a simple majority of members present and voting unless otherwise required by law or by this agreement.
Very good. Now, this amendment that we have here pretty much sums up what we need to do to change the wording on the contract that we presently have. Are there any questions on this? Go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
Going into the Educational Collaborative Board section, Mr. Himmelberger, "The school committee of each member town and district shall appoint," which was always the case. And I was the appointed member and I don't know whatever happened to it. The superintendent has represented us for years. But they're saying they're going from 4
For a quorum.
For a quorum. Okay. So, that section is still staying in there as far as the collaborative is concerned?
Yes.
Because what they're trying to change is the duration of the superintendent's term. But they haven't changed anything from the school committee, which we haven't appointed or haven't reappointed in years. And I haven't been apprised of any of the meetings, so I'd like to kind of know what's going on.
Okay.
From the collaborative, not from you specifically. But I guess I'd have to get the answers through you from the collaborative.
Right. Exactly. I think quite simply that they just want to take out the word annually so you don't have to reappoint every single year.
Right.
That they would have a member to the Board and then simply changing the quorum from 4 to 8. I would characterize it as procedural.
And that's basically the superintendent, they're changing to, from an annual vote to a permanent
Correct.
Whatever, whoever is superintendent of that system.
Exactly.
Okay. I would support that. All right, I'll let it go at that.
Okay. Mrs. DeWitzik, you got a question?
Yeah, just for clarification, I was following it until the last sentence you said, Mr. Peterson. Is, this is one person and then you said, is always a superintendent or that's another person? What did you just say?
I'm sorry, the superintendents are, I believe, according to charter, I don't have the charter in front of me, automatic. But each school committee is to elect their own representative to that board also.
Other than?
Other than, yes.
Okay. That's what I thought it was. Thank you.
I don't know how the board feels, but I was a standing member, haven't heard and I didn't, I don't know what's going on and they're changing their bylaws and things all of a sudden. Apparently, there's been a meeting as such by them to suggest this, right?
You good?
At this point.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Himmelberger?
I would have to double check with that because at the meetings I've been to for the past year and a half, it's only been a superintendent at each one of the meetings as the member of the Board of Directors. So, I'm not quite sure, Mr. Peterson, what they're referring to in the bylaw.
I don't either because it specifically states the school committee of each town.
To accommodate what we need here, really doesn't matter if we elect a member right now. And that really is not the point.
Just to change the word.
We just want to change the wording so that we will have the option to make that change if necessary. Mrs. Ennis?
Motion to approve amendments is written.
A second for further comment.
Yes, Mr. Peterson?
It doesn't necessarily, according to you, mean that, but it does because of the superintendent's not there. We're not represented if a school committee member is supposed to be elected. I will support the language change for the superintendent's duration at this point in time.
Okay. Very good. So, with that being said, we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second on that? Very good. Mrs. DeWitzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Those changes are in effect.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for that. Next, Mr. Himmelberger, could you give us a brief synopsis of? Oh, I apologize.
Can I just ask if the superintendent can find out if we, if, how that goes? Because I don't think we've ever voted for once.
We never have since I haven't, in six years I haven't.
He hasn't since all of you have been on board, right.
So, are you blaming us now, Mr. Peterson?
I need some clarification myself, so I'll make sure I get it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
We can, certainly. Could you take the next section of this for us? Could you give us the review of the NEAC accreditation report?
Certainly. I'd like to just inform the town that, in fact, we did have the visit from the NEAC Accreditation Committee last May. The report is now out and finalized. And I think overall, everyone is very pleased with what the committee came up with. I would pass this to Mr. Wells to give you maybe his take on it. I would pass this to Mr. Wells to give you maybe his take on it, because he had to preside over this day after day for several months. But, I think everyone is happy that, one, the high school has been re-accredited for another 10 years. But, there is certainly a timeline of follow-up that needs to be done that will continuously take a lot of work from our staff. But, the good news is that Oxford High School is re-accredited for 10 more years, and that the committee, I think, got it right and really pointed to our strengths. They also found where we had some shortcomings, and we have to work to address that. But, I'd like to just turn it over to Mr. Wells, our principal.
Thank you very much. My audience left, so I'll do the best that I can. It's actually, it gives me a great deal of pride, being my third year at Oxford High School, to share with you just a few recommendations and commendations from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. But, first and foremost, if I may, the Commission on Public Secondary Schools at its September 26th and 27th, 2010, meeting reviewed the decennial evaluation report from the recent visit to Oxford High School and voted to award the school continued accreditation in the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. They can be very critical. This is an outstanding report, as far as I'm concerned, overall. They hold us accountable. They want us to continue to raise the bar. If you just look quickly, you can see that some of the commendations would be the improvement of the school climate resulting from the emphasis on specific ideals and expectations for student learning, the positive teacher-student interactions, the variety of opportunities students have extended beyond their learning time in terms of course offerings for the school day and the variety of co-curricular activities, the use of various instructional technologies across the discipline, as well as the safe and positive learning environment. One of the things that they try to do essentially, over the course of my career, 30-plus years, and I've served on three of these committees in terms of visiting, when you look at commendations and recommendations, recommendations usually outweigh commendations two to one. So, it's very common for school districts to have twice, well, one-third, two-thirds the number of recommendations than commendations. So, a couple of the things in terms of the recommendations that they'll be looking for, the reports that we're going to have to provide, there will be one due in August, then there'll be a two-year report, then a five-year report. What's changed over the course as the New England Association has really kind of morphed itself, and they try to continue to raise the bar. The next time we have our 10-year accreditation process, they'll be changing several of the values. There's currently seven standards, that's going to change. So, they constantly take a look at themselves, they look at the national picture, and they try to bring that to a more regional, New England regional area. So, for recommend, I'm sorry, additional commendations, the use of shared goals by the principal to improve teaching and learning, and I thought the next one was really important to share, and that's the autonomy given to the principal by the school committee and the superintendent to lead the school in achieving the mission and expectations for our student learning. Our mentor program, the support provided the community by local agencies for the guidance and counseling services, and the special education programs and the services for teaching and learning. The strong student-community connections provided by the Naval Junior Reserve Officer Training Program. The establishment implementation of multiple businesses, business and community, rather, higher education partnerships. We're reaching out to Quinsigamet Community College, so we're trying to make that connection once again at Oxford High School. In terms of recommendations, they have some specific ones that they would like us to address for August. And then, of course, there's, it's much more, the depth and the breadth of their recommendations for the two-year report are relatively substantial as well. But, a quick overview, develop and implement a process in the time for departments to meet and discuss teaching and learning within their departments. Currently, we don't have department meetings because it hasn't been part of the teacher's contract. So, we're working on trying to work collaboratively with the union so that we can do that on a regular basis. Ensure that common planning time is used effectively. This is year number two at Oxford High School, where each of our departments have the same prep periods. Now, what that means is if the English department, it's essentially shut down during, say, period five, the math department, period four, that allows the teachers the opportunity to share with each other and to speak to each other, because in the past, what's happened with the rotating schedule in a seven-period day is that some teachers would be free during their prep period while other teachers are in class. So, this has already started to provide dividends for us in terms of just their ability to informally meet together, and it's worked out relatively well. One of the things is to increase the level of funding for print and non-print collections in the media center. What they've found is that Oxford High School is an absolutely beautiful school that has a wonderful media center, but that we don't have enough hard copy resources available for our student body. So, in working with the business manager and superintendent, I know that we'll be looking to increase that in the future. And that basically is what they're looking for us to do. So, it is going to be a work in progress. It is going to extend. Again, in years gone by, it used to be a two-year report, then a five-year report, and then see you in 10 years. But, there's constant communication going back and forth. I've made a lot of friends, if you will, with the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and it's been a great partnership. So, that's essentially a read-as-digest version of an overview, but I am proud of the fact, and there's so many people to thank for their time and dedication, far too many, but they know who they are, and I truly appreciate the support of the committee, as well as the superintendent and the business manager, in what was an endeavor that took four full days of 15 people lifting up rugs and talking to kids and shadowing and going and speaking with teachers individually, meeting with the school committee. It's a pretty intense process, so I'm very proud of everyone that was involved, and I thank you for the opportunity to present it to you this evening.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wells, you should be proud. Any comments or questions from the committee? There being none. Thank you again, Mr. Wells, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Himmelberger, could you handle the next two on the agenda, please? The capital requests and the discussion of the SEIU.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, as everyone might remember, last year, the town did not entertain capital requests because of the economic crisis that most towns in the country are finding themselves in. There is a request from four departments for this coming May town meeting for capital. And so, we do have, and I'll let Mr. Matthews speak to the specifics, but we did want to bring to the committee's attention our request for capital.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you very much. Included with the memo regarding the request was a listing of vehicles that we currently use and operate. As the committee is aware, we utilize vans and mini-yellow buses and the wheelchair-accessible vans for Project Coffee, as well as our local sped transportation needs. Our fleet is aging. We have six vehicles that are approaching 175,000-plus miles as of December 1st. When this is enacted upon by the town, it will be May, so that mileage will be up, obviously. And by the time things are actually purchased, we're probably looking at next September. So, the mileage numbers certainly will be up there, as potentially will be the repairs numbers. But, we are asking to replace three vehicles this year, and the approximate cost of that would be $90,000, and that's what we're asking the town for and the school committee to approve this evening.
Now, will this be the only capital request we present to the town in May, or will this be in addition to the middle school capital request that we've discussed over previous meetings?
For the town's request to departments for capital that fits the capital requirements, this would be the only one. The middle school renovations would be addressed separately outside of that.
Okay, very good. Any questions from the committee? Mr. Peterson?
Your written dissertation is mileage-oriented. Are there any other problems with the vehicles as far as, I don't want to say rust, but any other body problems or any physical problems of the vehicle other than the mileage on these vehicles as well that should be included in this if we really need to push?
Well, certainly as the vehicles get more and more mileage and the years go on, as you can see from the report, most of the vehicles we're looking at, that we've highlighted, the six are all 2003 and prior. And the repair costs are, of course, only going to escalate. And the repairs here, just as a note, is for the current fiscal year only. It's not accumulative, you know, per vehicle. I could certainly get the committee that additional information.
Go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
I don't want to scare the public, and I probably worded that wrong, but we maintain these, they're inspected, and safety and everything else, so that they're supposedly safe on the road, other than the high mileage accruing at this point in time, so I don't want the public to be... This construes something that I said in my words, that there's other problems with these vehicles that might be of a bad nature, all right?
Okay. Mrs. DeWitzek?
Mr. Himmelberger, or Mr. Matthews, was there any other areas of capital requests that you thought of, that you limited just to this, or is this the only thing that you came down thinking that this was the most important, or were there other areas that you thought of that we need, should know about?
Well, I think as we look through the needs of the district, some of the other things, such as technology, doesn't really qualify as a capital request and then has to be funded through other sources. And some of the other issues that we are desperate for would then fall into facilities management. So, Mr. Donay's department would bring those forth. So, in terms of, outside of the middle school renovation, this is the only capital request that Mr. Matthew and I would recommend to the committee now. Certainly, HVAC at the high school, basketball supports, and all of those things would come from the facilities managers' department.
Do we know if he's asked, or have any of those?
Yes, he's, we've actually put some of the straps on, I think all of the straps actually here at the high school, and Mr. Donay does have the HVAC software management expense into capital. And that cost was $17,000.
That's what he's putting on for his subcommittee.
Yes.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions? Do we want to vote on this tonight to request the capital request on this? Is the committee all set with that? If so, could we have a motion to?
I would move to put this on the list.
Okay, could we have a second to that motion? Very good. Mrs. DeWitzek, we'd like to put that to vote if we could?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? I also vote yes. So, we will have that as a capital request. And if you could take the next discussion as well, Mr. Himmelberger?
Certainly. In closing, your packet through the chair is the latest request that has been approved by the Division of Labor Relations of the Commonwealth, that our teaching assistants, Title I TAs, would be represented, and therapy assistants would be represented by the SEIU. And they have certified the vote, and as you see before you, those 23 employees will now be represented by SEIU. And I think that certainly the only thing I wanted to bring to the committee's attention was, and we certainly don't have to do it this evening, but I wanted to obviously let you know and state the obvious, we have a unit of SEIU representing our custodians in food service, and we have a unit of SEIU representing our instructional aides, our paraprofessionals. And so, with the addition of these 23, I think we have to see, and work with the SEIU to see what's most effective and efficient. And, you know, obviously, to place them in a third standalone unit is one option, and certainly another would be to accrete them, as Dr. Laporte has taught me new words, some of which I still am looking up, that we could accrete them into an already-existing unit, which would certainly give us a little bit of time and energy and cost savings when we have to negotiate. So, I just wanted to make sure that the committee knew that, yes, it is official, it is certified by the state, and so we will have 23 employees that we will have to negotiate through the SEIU. And I think probably Dr. Laporte, with the negotiating subcommittee, would then talk to the SEIU. But, I wanted to bring it to the committee's attention for their own edification.
Go ahead, Mrs. Ennis, I'll wait. I was just going to say, so this was more of an informational source?
Exactly.
It's nothing that we have to react to tonight?
I'll defer to Mrs. DeWitzek.
Okay, well, that's what I'm trying to find out, what we, Mrs. Ennis, would you mind if we'd like?
I would like, if we could, breakdown of their salaries, please, if we could have that, the 23 individuals, the current salaries.
Certainly.
You had a point, Mrs. DeWitzek.
I did. I spoke with Dr. Laporte, who could not be here today, and I know from the negotiated subcommittee, we did talk about this. And it is his recommendation, as it is ours, the negotiator's, to absorb them, whichever way you want to use it, effective July 1st of 2011, into the group with the instructional aides, so that we would have two. And we will just, they will have their own sub-limits in there, as other unions have also, like the nurses and teachers and the cafeterias. But, that way you don't have all those different unions to do. So, it is his recommendation that we move to acknowledge them and to address them starting July 1st of 2011 into that contract.
Okay.
So, basically, we do need to acknowledge them tonight.
Right, then that's what we're going to do.
All right.
All right? So, do we have a motion to?
A move to acknowledge them, moving this to the, back to the subcommittee for final negotiations and implementation to come back to you as to where we place them, in what category, in what unit. This has to be agreed upon by us and them, so we'll have to work with them.
Okay. Is that how you'd like it, Mrs. DeWitzek?
You can do that, but I think we would implement them into the instructional aides. We would not implement them into the cafeteria.
Well, that would be my intention too, but I believe we still have to just acknowledge this and then work with them from there, all right?
So- Presently, your motion is just acknowledge-
To acknowledge them and move it back to the negotiation team to, and the administration to work with them as to where we go from here with it.
Is that, any question?
I'm not sure, I'm, if I could just ask, do you have to have conversation with them now? Or do we, or do we now dictate you're going to be part of this unit, or?
No, we can if Mrs. DeWitzek wants to dictate tonight, but they have to agree to. If they don't, it can be a long stall-out process to move it from accreting into what we have, all right?
They'd like, if I may?
You go right ahead.
I believe from talking to Dr. Laporte that they would like to, one, be recognized, which we should do.
Right.
And tell them where and when.
Okay.
And that was what I said, as far as they would go into the instructional aides.
That's what I understood you said, too.
And it will begin as of July 1st, 2011, so that they have a starting date, and that they will then, when this contract negotiations begin with them, they will be addressed starting on that day into that unit.
Then I would incorporate that into my motion, because-
That's better.
I feel better with that.
Much better.
Total explanation from Dr. Laporte that they had, he had already talked and worked on, on those issues.
Okay, so he has amended his motion to incorporate what you just stated.
Right.
So, do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, so could we put that to a vote, please?
Yes.
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 And I also vote yes, so they are now officially recognized as well as classified. How's that? How's that?
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Indated, indicted.
Right. That's right. I think we've already heard from our subcommittee, student representative, do we have anything else, Mr. Himmelberger, that you'd like to touch on tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I only have two brief comments. One is, I cannot thank Mrs. Ennis enough for the work that she did and Mrs. Coonan, and ultimately for the committee to approve this. It was, as you can imagine, school committees and school districts around the state are scrambling this month, and because they didn't have the leadership, they didn't have the effort, they didn't have the community buy-in that we had to get this, so I just wanted to say again, thank you. The other piece of it that Mr. Spitz you alluded to was the SBA and engineering regarding the renovation at the middle school, and I think that we had left it at that. I would set up, if we can, a meeting in January with both RDK, our engineering firm, and a representative from SBA, so that we can really start to see the size and scope in the process in order to get the word out as to what is at stake here regarding the middle school renovations. And as soon as I can get that formalized, I'll bring it back to the committee for your approval.
Great.
And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Matthews?
I have nothing else this evening.
Very good. Mrs. DeWitzick?
I just, two quick things. One is just as far as the transportation policy, and Mrs. Ennis, you sent me something also. We're going to send that back to the subcommittee. Obviously, tonight, we want to get through the bullying, so perhaps in January we will address.
That's where it should be.
Right.
It should be back to the committee anyways, and I was going to bring that up as well tonight, that you, you really should have it in your committee to bring back to us with any changes or whatever. Thank you.
And the only other thing is to wish everyone a happy holiday and happy new year. That's it.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mrs. Coonan?
Nothing, other than holiday wishes and be safe.
All right, Mrs. Ennis?
I do have a request. I would like a, if we could, after the first of the year, I would like to see a technology comparison between all the schools, and I'm going to keep the option open, maybe the committee may be interested on touring the schools. I think that we need to see what, if everything is being, I guess, divided out equally, I'd like to see what the high school has compared to the middle school, compared to the elementary schools, and what the two elementary schools. So I'm very interested in a comparison, if there's even a report that we can have from our technology director, I would really appreciate that. But again, all of these things in the new year. And I also, too, wish all the families happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a happy new year.
Very good.
Thank you.
We'll make sure that you get that.